We'll call to order the council adjournment CNA DA for Monday, January 4th, 2016. Please arise for the invocation from Joe Gargovich of the First Christian Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you that we can gather for another opportunity to do this important work. As we transition into a new year, we pray blessings upon those who have served, those who continue to serve, and those who will be serving. We pray that you would watch over them and guide them in all that they say and in all that they do and in all their decision-making. And as always, all these prayers we send to you in your son's name. Amen.
Mayor Greer.
Here.
Council members Ekstrom.
Here.
Ketchmar.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Frida.
Here.
Council members Brown and Sharaki are excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is approval of the minutes from the December 7th regular city council meeting and the December 9th general government committee meeting. Are there any corrections? None. May I have a motion, please? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, for the last time, I'd like to approve December 7th, 2015, a regular city council meeting and December 9th, 2015, general government committee meeting.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Frida. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Are there any council members announcements?
Yeah.
Councilman Weed?
Yeah, I'd just like to take this opportunity to say what a pleasure it's been working with Colby and Ron and Pat and for a brief period, Ron. And I mean, it's been an amazing, fun four years. And we've gotten awful lot done, and I'm really looking forward to moving forward. So, thanks.
You. Councilman Bates? Councilwoman Frida?
Well, thank you, Dennis, and I would like to second that. It's been a real pleasure working with all of you. And I would also like to thank the community for the privilege of having been able to serve in this capacity and to say welcome and congratulations to the new mayor and council members.
Councilman Bates?
And I'll echo that. This has been quite an honor and a privilege to sit up here for eight years and actually survived eight years and enjoyed every moment with everybody up here. We've had kind of like a family. We haven't agreed on everything, but we've always had the, we always had the goal and goal never changed. It was always there. So, and I want to thank you all, and I'm going to miss Pat because we've been together eight years.
Councilman Ketchmar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's been a real pleasure serving with you all and serving for you all. I'd like to wish everyone a happy and prosperous new year. I'd like to say good luck, good fortune to the new council. I feel good about the direction that the community is heading in, and I just hope we can keep up that pressure in a strong manner. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll echo your sentiments. It's been a very rewarding six years for me as well. We've had our ups and downs, and sometimes it's been very humbling, but it's been a pleasure working with you guys and working for the community. And there's a seat for me in the back, too. I'm very confident with the new council and the mayor that are coming in. So, I think we're going to continue to move forward in the coming years. Next is the adoption of the CNA DA agenda. I need a motion and a second. Councilman Bates?
I make the motion. We adopt the CNA DA agenda.
Second. Second from Councilman Ketchmar. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Next, if we could have Preston, Ashley, Mark, Jim, and Kathleen meet at the podium.
Mayor or elect, we will do you first if you want to come on right over here.
That sounds ominous.
Hey, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Preston R. Troutman.
I, Preston R. Troutman.
Residing at 1365 Allison Avenue.
Residing at 1365 Allison Avenue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will honor and uphold.
That I will honor and uphold.
Constitution's laws and regulations.
Constitution's laws and regulations.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
The charter ordinance, ordinance laws and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of mayor to the best of my ability.
Of mayor to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Now you have to sign. Ashley. I, Ashley R. Smith.
I, Ashley R. Smith.
Residing at 123 Eagle Crest Loop.
Residing at 123 Eagle Crest Loop.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will honor and uphold.
That I will honor and uphold.
The Constitution's laws and regulations.
The Constitution, laws, and regulations.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
And the charter order, laws, and regulations.
The city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
As council member to the best of my ability.
As council member to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Now you have to sign. Mark. Mr. Gill. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Mark Gill.
Aye, Mark Gill.
Residing at 278 South Cottonwood Avenue.
Residing at 278 South Cottonwood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will honor and uphold.
That I will honor and uphold.
The Constitution's laws and regulations.
The Constitution's laws and regulations.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter, charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Right, John?
Mm-hmm.
Jim Meisner.
I, Jim Meisner.
I, Jim Meisner.
Residing at 918 Beach Avenue.
Residing at 918 Beach Avenue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will honor and uphold.
That I will honor and uphold.
The Constitution's laws and regulations.
The Constitution, laws, and regulations.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter, charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Right, John?
Mm-hmm.
Jim Meisner.
I, Jim Meisner.
Residing at 918 Beach Avenue.
Residing at 918 Beach Avenue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will honor and uphold.
That I will honor and uphold.
The Constitution's laws and regulations.
The Constitution, laws, and regulations.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Kathleen. I, Kathleen Anne Schumacher.
I, Kathleen Anne Schumacher.
Residing at 2525 Greenway Circle.
Residing at 2525 Greenway Circle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will honor and uphold.
That I will honor and uphold.
The Constitution's laws and regulations.
The Constitution, laws, and regulations.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
And the charter ordinances, laws, and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of council member to the best of my ability.
And councilman to the best of my abilities.
Kathleen. I, Kathleen Anne Schumacher.
I, Kathleen Anne Schumacher.
Residing at 2525 Greenway Circle.
Residing at 2525 Greenway Circle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will honor and uphold.
That I will honor and uphold.
The Constitution's laws and regulations.
The Constitution, laws, and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I think now we're going to go ahead and do a photo op. Is that right?
That is correct, yeah. So, the current and former council members scoot in toward the middle, and the new council And with that, we will adjourn the existing council CNA DA.
See what color my hair was six years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what happens. Turn around.
Tony.
Be a stranger. Come sit in the peanut gallery once in a while. Sure, you're a pioneer.
I like your nose.
No, I have, I have been critical of a community that would dare not show up. I'm thinking, well, I go up and be one of the people that did you get that.
You're right next to Kathy. Ashley. Good day. Mark?
Yes.
Second half of the council.
There we go. Just like you've been booing us for the planning division.
I know, and I'm bored of the question.
I guess I'm fired for this.
Councilman?
Councilwoman?
Welcome, Ash.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah.
I didn't check my emails much. Oh, I didn't check them around, so.
Yeah.
Hey, Scott, should we let one of the new guys do this?
You know, it's.
Well, you see, we have new cheeches.
And we all have one.
Do what?
You didn't pick on me too much, so.
Okay, all right.
Just one minute.
That's right.
We'll see. I mean, we've got pretty big shoes to fill with Romney as far as filling in the motions and picking the motions.
Now, the.
He had ninety percent of them.
The weight of approving all of the minutes has, has to fall to somebody else.
He at 617. Okay, ready? Go.
I would like to call to order the new council and mayor of Canyon City. And Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmembers Smith.
Here.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Sharaki is excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any comments that would like to be made from the new members or the experienced members of council? Scott?
Well, first, I'd like to welcome the new council, and I'm excited to work with you for the next, I guess we have two years working together, right? And then.
Six, I think.
Is it six? Well, six for you.
You did.
Yeah, I don't know, at least two.
We're not arguing, are we?
Yeah. And then, we do have a general government meeting, right? That will be this Wednesday at four o'clock, and I'm not sure who's going to chair that, but we should mention that we have that meeting.
That's this Wednesday, the sixth, at four here in this building right here. All right? And I do have appointments for the general government meeting, and I'll, so the new candidates will be, the new members will be there. Okay? And also, anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to welcome the new members of council and echo Scott's comments. I'm looking forward to working with all of you for the next two or six years, whatever it may be. And anyhow, welcome.
Thank you. Well, I have a few comments I would like to make, and this, a lot of this was gleaned from a friend of mine who helped me and through the campaign, and I'd like to thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be mayor of this town. I think it's an honor and a privilege. I want to thank the outgoing mayor and the council people that have just gone off council. And welcome to the four new members. And I'm glad, I'm sure we'll have two good years together, we'll continue the progress. And thank you to the experienced two that are here, or three, to help us out. I want to thank my family. Since November, I guess it was since July, we've gone through the campaign like everybody else has, and all those that helped me with that campaign. I sought the position because I believe my past involvement with private business in the city of Canyon City and the city council has prepared me to be an effective executive visionary for the, for the community and for the city council. I'm committed to longstanding values of the city charter, which requires city council to manage all the affairs of the city with equal input from citizens, business community, and the city administration. The challenge will always be to ensure balance and vision is created through many inputs, assuring that we don't become single-minded or single-focused. I can assure you that my goals in support of the council will always be to find input from the community, and it's received in advance of every city meeting as a priority. I desire all future council meetings to be viewed as opportunities to learn from and with our community. I believe our council chambers need to reflect the history, the current and future accomplishments and the values, and it's to be viewed as a welcoming location for our citizens to come. I believe we need to be open to all forms of communication to include personal input, including technology, improvements in technology, and also, I would like to see if we could have a more engaging website. I'd like to have polls and surveys, and I'd like to receive input from all generations. I'm convinced that the council would benefit from many sources of input, including the needs and wants of the community. I'll support that need through seeking many perspectives on issues that will relate to financial management, long-term planning, and strategy of the city, making sure that options are brought before the council and ensuring the council has the appropriate due diligence prior to decision-making. As newly affected, as newly elected officials, we can bring positive energy to our city through how we begin our term together. It's my desire that we create avenues for more business and community involvement by placing the need to hear from them at every given chance. I'll be asking the council to approve additions and possible changings to meetings to ensure that the community knows what we're doing in advance and how we conduct city business. You know, make no mistake, we face challenges, just like any city our size. However, we have more opportunities, more opportunities than those cities. We have history. We have location. We have natural resources. We have weather, and we have an extraordinarily talented population. I intend to strengthen the city's relationship with the county and all towns in Fremont County. We're the largest commercial center of our county, and because of this, Canyon City should benefit or could benefit from any activity that occurs anywhere in Fremont County. All we need to do is continue to improve how we view challenges and opportunities to grow our community in a positive, responsible way. I come to this position as mayor with enthusiasm to support the community and council in many ways. I look forward to representing Canyon City, the community, and newly formed council. I'd like you to think of this. It's not the mountain we conquer, but ourselves. Thank you.
Okay, we have a mayoral position that I have appointed. I've asked a council member, Ashley Smith, to be a member of the ditch board. And do I need a motion on that, or?
It's a mayoral appointment, and that would be to the, to all the ditch boards.
All the ditch board, and that's coming up pretty soon, Ashley. Okay? Adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Doug, would you like to review the consent agenda, or?
Excuse me, consent agenda for tonight. I'll kind of explain this a little bit more going through this for the new council to kind of tell you about some of the information that we try to put in the packet for you. The first item that we have is, it's something that we do every year. You'll see on the consent agenda is to redesignate the bulletin board upstairs on the second floor of the city hall lobby as the official posting place for all notices of all meetings. That's something that's required part of the state statute, and so we do this every year at this time. So, we would encourage you to approve that, that, that place for posting. Second item on the agenda is to authorize the mayor's signature on an agreement for participation in the upper Arkansas recycling program. Now, you'll notice that one of the things that we try to do here is we try to point out when these were reviewed at a committee. We try to take all this information and review these at one of the committee meetings over the course of time. So, you'll notice that here, so if you didn't happen to be there, you can go back and refer to those minutes and kind of get updated on that. This one, we, was referred to the general government committee at the December 9th meeting. It was recommended for approval at that time. This is for the annual agreement for the city's participation in a three-county, that's Fremont, Custer, and Chaffee County recycling program. We have included this in the 2016 budget. You'll notice here, we're suggesting a not-to-exceed number of 13,500. In the agreement, it talks about a, the subsidy that's required to make the, the recycling program work. This would be our share, but we are also suggesting here that it be clear that this is a not-to-exceed number of 13,500 for this program. So, we've included that in the, the recommendation here. Excuse me. This is also no increase from the cost for last year's service as well. Next item is to authorize the city administrator's signature on an agreement for the community video tour. About four years ago, the city council authorized us to participate with a company called CGI. CGI came into our community. They filmed a community video. That community video included a welcoming statement, information on the quality of life and economic development in our community and so on. So, once again, we are, that agreement was for four years. That agreement is now up. This would be re-upping that agreement, if you will. And we reviewed this, you'll see, at the December 9th general government committee. It was recommended at that time that we continue this participation. The cost for this to the city, there is no cost to the city. The way this works, as we talked about at that time, CGI has the opportunity to go around, go around to local businesses to see if they would like to participate. If they do, there's a cost that CGI picks up from those businesses that are participating. That's how the program would be funded, but there's no requirement for any business to participate whatsoever in this. So, for example, if no business participate, we'd have a free video tour of our community. But it's an opportunity for businesses to get on the, on the website and, and participate in advertising. So, we reviewed this again, and it's recommended at the December 9th general government committee for approval. Next item is to ratify the list of bills. This was from the December 21st council meeting, and the amount of $979,663.23. We discussed this actually at the December 7th council meeting, for any of those that you may remember. Typically, what we do is we review these, these bills and approve them on an every-two-week basis at your regular meetings. Given that we were not going to have a meeting on December 21st, we agreed at that time that we would bump that to this meeting. We're ratifying the payments that have actually already been made. So, just kind of information, and again, we reviewed that previously with the, at the December 7th meeting with the council at that time. Next item on your consent agenda is approval of the combined regional communication authority, CRCA. This is their 2016 budget. You'll see a memo in your packet from the city attorney that explains a little bit of background on the CRCA. This is an intergovernmental agreement that the city has entered into several years ago. The purpose of it was to combine the communication center. Typically, every year, we've been paying about 430,000 plus or minus in our annual budget for our own communication center. You'll see here that the share of this 980,873 annual budget for the entire authority, our share, the city's share, is 484,944. So, you'll see that our share on an annual basis has gone up somewhat over what we've been paying for our own communication center. Now, the logic in that, just kind of for history, is that our equipment in our communication center is aging. Some of it has, is getting into that failure mode. So, the additional amount in effect is getting us all-new equipment within a new center. It has also been intended to improve the overall communications within the various agencies within the county, so hopefully that, that objective has been accomplished as well. So, we're recommending, and it was discussed at a August 19th public works committee, the mayor, the former mayor, I should say, has been participating in those and has reviewed the budget with, with all of us at a staff level, and we're recommending approval of the budget. It's a requirement in the IGA that the city council approves that budget on an annual basis. And then, our 884,000 is included in our 2016 budget, so the money has been budgeted. You'll also notice in the city attorney's memo that our payments, that 484,000 number, would be paid in four installments to the CRCA of 121,235 each over the coming year or over this year. The next item is the bids, and this time, we have several bids, bid number two. Now, one thing I would want to point out, you'll see these bids, and typically, what you're going to see here in the first meeting of the year are the routine purchases from the various departments. Our street department, our water department, other departments will have routine purchases that they purchase every year for material. in that, just kind of for history, is that our equipment in our communication center is aging. Some of it has, is getting into that failure mode. So, the additional amount in effect is getting us all-new equipment within a new center. It has also been intended to improve the overall communications within the various agencies within the county. So, hopefully, that, that objective has been accomplished as well. So, we're recommending, and it was discussed at a August 19 public works committee, the mayor, the former mayor, I should say, has been participating in those and has reviewed the budget with, with all of us at a staff level. And we're recommending approval of the budget. It's a requirement in the IGA that the city council approves that budget on an annual basis. And then our $884,000 is included in our 2016 budget. So, the money has been budgeted. You'll also notice in the city attorney's memo that our payments, that $484,000 number, would be paid in four installments to the CRCA of $121,235 each over the coming year, or over this year. The next item is the bids, and this time, we have several bids, bid number two. Now, one thing I would want to point out, you'll see these bids, and typically, what you're going to see here in the first meeting of the year are the routine purchases from the various departments. Our street department, our water department, other departments will have routine purchases that they purchase every year for materials and supplies to go throughout the year. And typically, what we do, and we will try to do this in the future, all of these purchases will come to a committee meeting and then end up on probably your second budget. But in this particular case, these are here tonight. These are the annual purchases for the street department. Bid number two, you'll see that this is for the street department, street division for Rocky Mountain Materials, Colorado Springs, excuse me, in an amount not to exceed $45,000 for the annual purchase of asphalt for street maintenance and repairs. So, this would be for asphalt that would take them throughout the year for, for repairs and maintenance of our streets. In this particular case, as we will do in, in all of our agendas, our bids, there were three bids that were received out of the five that were solicited. So, we go out and ask for as many as we can get, and we report that to you. Rocky Mountain, in this particular case, was the low bidder, and the funds for this particular purchase are included in the 2016 budget. The next item is bid number three of 16. Again, an annual purchase for the street division. This would be for Fremont paving and ready-mix of Canyon City in an amount not to exceed, in this case, $50,500. This is for the annual purchase of concrete, again, for street maintenance and repairs. In this particular case, one bid was received from the two that were solicited, with this being the sole bidder for this particular material. And again, the funds for this purchase are included in the 2016 budget. Next item is bid number four of 16, again, for the streets division for TSAC heavy equipment of Canyon City in an amount not to exceed $55,000. This is for the annual purchase of gravel, again, for our street maintenance and repairs throughout the year. Two bids were received. There were actually three that were solicited, but two were received. And TSAC heavy equipment, in this case, was the low bidder. The funds are, again, included in the 2016 budget. We include all these annual purchases in the coming year's budget. Bid number five of 16, this is for flowable fill for the streets division. This is to Fremont paving and ready-mix of Canyon City in an amount not to exceed $12,000. This is for the annual purchase of flowable fill material, again, to go into our street maintenance and repairs. We had one bid that was received from two that were solicited. In this case, again, they were the sole bidder for this particular purchase. Again, funds are included in the 2016 budget for this purchase. Bid number six of 16, in this case, this is for the street department, or for the parks department, I'm sorry. Now, you probably have heard in some of the previous work sessions, committee meetings that we've had, that in our community, we have a large number of public street trees. Typically, those are the trees that are either in parks, the trees that are between the curb and the sidewalks along our public streets. All of those are public trees. As you all have probably have heard, we have a significant tree population, and we have a significant kill within that population due to disease that we've talked about at some of our committee meetings, as well as last November, if you remember, the big temperature drop killed a significant amount of trees in the community. So, we have hired, in this case, we are proposing to hire Front Range Arborist of Colorado Springs in an amount not to exceed $211,000, which is the annual cost for them to come in, remove many of our dead trees and their stumps. We have a prioritization program that we've set up, that they will start taking priority trees and begin to remove those as we go forward. So, it's really necessary to get those trees removed before they become a safety issue. This vendor was the sole bidder from those that were solicited, and again, these funds are included in the 2016 budget. And then lastly, on the consent agenda, is the list of bills payable for the last two-week payable period. That's it for tonight.
Thank you, Doug. So, we have to pay bills, too, huh?
Unfortunately, we do.
Okay. Okay, we entertain a motion then to, any questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Weed?
Yeah, I would like to just remove item numbers, or item bid six dash 16 and discuss it separately.
The procedure with respect to that, if it may, Mr. Mayor, is, is that any council member may remove, for purposes of discussion, any consent agenda item, and then it would be put somewhere on the regular agenda. If a citizen should make that request, it would be up to the full council to determine whether that request would be granted.
So, at this time, I would be entertaining a motion to approve...
Well, you don't even need a motion because a council member has requested.
No, for the remaining consent agenda.
For the remaining consent agenda, if you pull the item Councilman Weed wants pulled and reassigned it, then you could go forward with the vote on the remainder.
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with items six dash 16 removed. Mr. Weed?
Dennis, if you could have it in your motion where you would like to place that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I'd make the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented, with the exception of removing, removing bid number six dash 16 and placing it immediately after the consent agenda, so we could call it item 3GH.
I suggest 4A.
4A, sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second that motion, please.
It's made in second. Would you, by, Mr. Gill, would you call the roll, please? Any discussion on the, any discussion on that?
I just have one question. A number four fifteen, is that supposed to be 416?
It's a typo. I've corrected it already.
416.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote. That will move us to 4A, bid number six of 16.
Okay, do I now open it for discussion on that?
Yeah, and hopefully Doug can answer this question, because the, the reason I'm raising the issue is because we changed the, the way the bid was done. Normally, this would have just been a carryover from a previous contractor. And they changed their price from a per-tree price to a per-day price. And I can't remember what the per-tree price was. For some reason, I have it in my head, it was like $250 or something.
It was about a thousand, a thousand plus.
A thousand per tree?
Mm-hmm, average.
And how many trees did we take out last year? Was it?
We probably, I can't remember.
We didn't budget $400,000 for this last year, did we?
It was trimming, pruning.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Harry, can you clarify that? I thought it was like $105 per tree.
$105 per tree for removal, not removing, for pruning is $100, $100, and $1,000 is for removing tree. Now, depending on what the diameter of the tree is, so if it is a big tree, then it might be additional cost. So, we normally budgeted...
Yeah.
Normally, we budgeted about $50,000, $60,000. And last year, we budgeted $75,000.
Yeah, it's, I'm trying to decide if I think $1,800 a day is a better deal than $1,000 a tree.
Yeah, and we discussed that a lot. And the reason we are doing this, because they don't have actual, you know, which tree needs to be cut, you know, it's very hard to tell, you know. And then, in the, this season, in January, February, they can cut more trees. In the, in the summertime, they have busy business somewhere else. They are charging us a lot more money at that time. They are averaging out this cost throughout the year, so they can, whenever they are available, they can keep, cut the trees with a cheaper price.
We did go through an assessment on this, and, you know, there are the days where they may get a couple of trees because they're very large. There are other days, many of those days, where they'll get seven or eight trees, whatever it may be, because you got a variety, you know, of smaller trees. So, we did go through on an, on assessment, and to take a look at how many trees we thought we could remove. Again, we know that the numbers are going to be high, and that's why we budgeted more money this coming year because of this kill that happened last November, a year ago. But what we did is we went through this assessment, and our conclusion was that by going to a daily rate, we actually think that we're going to get a better, a better rate than if it was just, you know, based on the number of trees. Because our, our feeling was that it was probably going to be, you know, if you looked at the charge, the way we have been getting billed, it was probably $2,200, $2,300 on a daily basis. And because they can, you know, do it, they can count on this on a daily basis, it really dropped it to about $1,800 a day.
And do we have some kind of a definition of what a day is?
Yes, we do. It's an eight-hour day, and that is in the contract that was part of the bid documents. There's, there's a little bit of setup time prior to the, as part of the eight hours. But it's a full eight hours by a full crew, which I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, is at least three individuals. Could be more, but can't be less. And if they, if they work fewer than eight hours, we'll prorate...
Got it, okay.
The amount. One other thing I would like to add, because you haven't seen the bid documents, or unless you came down to the, and looked at them. But this contract, if executed, if you approve the bid and go on to the next step, which would be executing the contract, has, within its terms, a provision that would allow the same contractor to perform the same services for up to three years beyond the original year of, of the contract. Originally, we were talking in the neighborhood of in excess of $700,000, if I'm remembering the number correctly. That might be the total cost to catch up with all the, the dead trees. We can't do that in one year, but we've given ourselves enough time to do it under this contract, provided that the contractor holds to its price, or holds to a price that is this price, subject to, what am I trying to say? Denver Boulder CPI increases, if any.
And is there anything in the contract that sort of encourages them to actually cut trees and not get busy doing other work and just kind of leave us hanging?
Well, I, this particular vendor has a good track record with our parks department and parks personnel. They do a good job, and they, we watch, and I think they do a good job, even if we weren't watching, from, from what the parks department reports to me.
There's also an incentive in that, in that agreement, that because they're giving
us this favorable rate, put upon them to do this work during their, what would be called their slower season, which is basically now.
Now.
Through springtime. Because when they get to springtime, they get busy, and they can get more money on other projects. So, it's incumbent upon them to get in here and get this work done.
That was my concern.
And then there'd be another cutting season in the fall, but...
Sure, okay.
So, excuse me, the, the parks department then would sort of be their supervisor, overlook what they're doing, and could make recommendations in the future that they did a good job or not a good job. Right, okay.
We have a, we've actually created a database of all these public trees throughout the town, and the, the quality of those trees, whether they're diseased, they're, they're, it's a high-priority removal, low-priority removal, whatever the case may be. And so, they have this list that they basically use as a checklist to make sure that we're getting the trees that need to be taken care of immediately.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, do we do a motion then? Yes, Mr. Gill, sorry.
Was there any local businesses that have the ability to do what we need done here? Was there any, were they given a opportunity to bid on this situation?
Yes, they were, but done did.
Okay.
This, this... We have some local businesses that are certainly capable, and we will certainly use them on projects that they are capable of doing and want to do. This is a major project that, that we've laid out here.
Okay, and they're not, they're not geared to do it?
Not geared towards this, this extensive of a project.
And I think that's how we ended up with these guys last year, is because local vendors weren't able to handle the volume of trees that we needed removed.
And the other concern that I have is, as far as, you know, accountability on their end, like Dennis was talking about, I concur with him, you know, to make sure that we're doing the right thing by doing an annual bid versus a tree-by-tree bid, to make sure we're getting our money's worth. And that was a concern of mine, too. But, with the recommendation and such, that the parks department has worked with them and all, I think that kind of eliminates some of that.
Any further questions? Okay, we need a motion then on approval for bid 06 dash 16. Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I make the motion to approve bid number six series of 2016.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Sorry.
Mr. Meisner, seconds. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Okay, do we have to have a motion to approve the, the list of bills?
We'll, we'll move to item number four.
That was it?
You included that with your consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, then we move to the administrator's report. Doug?
Just a couple of items for tonight. First of all, you'll notice in your packet, we try to give you this on a, on a monthly basis to keep the council and the public informed about our sales tax, and it reflects business in Canyon City. You'll, you'll get a chart, for those of you that have not seen it. You'll get a chart every month, and we try to go through this with you. You'll notice that for the month of, of November, in the month of November, if you compare November of 2014 to 2000, November of 2015, in 14, we had $477,000 of, of sales tax revenues collected. In 15, November, we had $527,000 of revenue collected, which would lead you to believe that certainly, business, you know, was better in 2015 than 14, certainly in the month of November. That is up, in November of 15, compared to last year in November, 10.5%. So, that's certainly good news. If you look at the entire picture of 2014 year-to-date and 2015 year-to-date, you'll see that we have gone from, in 2014, we'd had a total collection at the end of November of $5.277 million in revenue, sales tax revenue coming into the city. In 2015, through the end of November, that number is $5,694,000. So, we are up, you know, year-to-date, 7.9% in sales tax collections. So, that's all good news, and certainly a good story for us going forward. So, wanted to update you on that. The second thing, I'll have Harry, he's got a pile of documents for each one of you. So, we're going to give you a copy of the final 2016 budget. You'll each have a copy, for anybody that has an interest in that. There's a copy on the city website. There are copies here at city hall, over at the library, if you should want to go over there and get it as well. So, it's available for people if they would like to see it.
Do we have to memorize that, then?
By next Thursday.
By next Thursday, okay.
There will be a test.
Thanks, Harry.
Harry's finishing that up. The last item that I had for tonight is, is there anyone out there in the audience from Valleywide Health? They were going to be here tonight, and I don't, I guess they maybe have forgot about it. But just for people's information, Valleywide Health Systems closed on the Sunflower Bank Building downtown on December the 14th. They have some very interesting ideas for the renovation of the building for future use at that location. That use is a, a health facility. It will provide a number of new jobs downtown. They figure that that, at least in the short term, is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 plus or minus jobs. jobs, uh, short-term. Uh, and when I say short-term, probably over the next couple of years, because it's going to take them some time to rehabilitate the building and get it up and get it going. But they also expect that over the long-term, that number will grow. It'll be more, more than thirty. Um, and I was hoping that maybe they'd be here tonight, uh, be able to give a little bit of, uh, the story of what they envisioned for that, for our community. Uh, we will try to get them here in the near future so each, each of you can kind of hear that story. Uh, we've been having ongoing discussions with them and so they have some exciting plans and, and we'll keep everyone, uh, informed as we go forward. So for tonight, that's it.
Thank you, Doug. Well, that's exciting. Our, Kathy, any requests from citizens to speak?
Request, no written request to speaks particularly on an item that's not already on the agenda.
Okay. Let's move on to, uh, council appointment of mayor pro tem. And I would then now call for nominations for mayor pro tem. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, council, I would nominate, uh, Councilmember Weed as mayor pro tem.
Second then.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Call for a... Okay, then I'm going to close the nomination at this time for mayor pro tem. It's in red here, so. Anyway. Thank you. Um, my face is the same color, probably. Um, okay, I have a motion and a second for the nomination of, uh, Mr. Weed for mayor pro tem. Do I hear motion? We did the motion, didn't we? You nominated him. So go ahead.
I move that we, um, appoint, is it appoint term, correct terminology? Appoint, uh, Councilmember Weed as mayor pro tem.
Second. Second? Who made the second?
I'll second.
Scott, whoever. Scott. Okay. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Hmm. Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Okay. Uh, the next is for resolution one dash two zero one six, authorizing endorsers on accounts. Could I have a report from the city attorney, please?
Mr. Mayor, annually, uh, when there's a change in officers, uh, of the, the city, we re-up with the banks and so that we can conduct our banking without undue interruption. That's all this is, is a resolution that, that names you and the, and the, uh, finance director and, uh, the city administrator is the three individuals who will have authority to execute checks and, and then gives a finance director certain other powers that are important to the functioning of the finance department.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Havens. Um, any discussion from council? We'd like to entertain then a motion from council to approve this resolution. Aye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, council, I recommend that, uh, we make a, I'm going to make a motion that we approve resolution number one series of 2016.
Second.
Made in second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're going to open up a public hearing for the application for a special event liquor permit for the local Elks Club. I'd like to hereby open that meeting because we had the report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this is Tony McCoy that's going to mosey up to the podium here. He is representing the local Elks Lodge who has applied to this council for a special event liquor permit, uh, for an event to be held Friday, the January fifteenth. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the premises at least a minimum of ten days in advance. This event will be from noon until eleven PM. The organization plans on opening their facility to the public and will be hosting a spaghetti dinner, uh, to help raise funds for the cause. They have identified that they will carefully check the IDs at the door. Those of legal drinking age will receive a wristband and those of non-legal drinking age will receive a black X on their hands. Uh, the, the club has held a number of similar events in the past with no resulting concerns. Many representatives of this organization has attended training given, uh, by the city and plans to go ahead and do so this year as well. Upon, uh, review of the application, the appropriate fee has been submitted, the diagram meets the filing requirements, and the corporation is in good standing with the secretary of state's office. So with that, I would open it up to any questions this council may have of the applicant.
Yes, Scott.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McCoy, how are you doing today?
Great.
Great. Um, I have a couple of questions here and, uh, you're probably familiar with them. Uh, are you familiar with the Colorado liquor code? And you have a copy of that on file with your organization? Thank you. Um, how many volunteers are you going to have for this event?
Probably have about eight or ten.
Tony, can you speak into the mic? They're not picking you up.
They will probably have about eight or ten people there.
Thank you. And how will they be trained on the liquor code?
Pardon me?
How will they be trained on the liquor code?
They've all been, uh, been through it before and stuff and all of them are familiar with all the liquor license and everything.
Thank you. Um, are you fully aware, uh, that you are responsible for the compliance with the Colorado liquor code and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your organization as well as, uh, future licensing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, you want to tell us about your event?
Yeah, we're just having, uh, basically a all-you-can-eat spaghetti dinner and, uh, then we're going to have a silent auction to help raise some funds for, for some organizations yet, undetermined yet, but we will be giving the monies to, to somebody else to, to help somebody. So that's basically it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any comments from the audience? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and I would entertain a motion from council. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members of council, I make a motion that we approve this special, um, this application for a special events liquor permit for the local Elks Club, uh, on January fifteenth.
Second?
Second, any discussion? If not, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ekstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck with that. Okay, another public hearing. Excuse me. Uh, to open a special review, uh, use for a property at one forty-five South Reynolds. And could we have the reports, I'm opening the public hearing, uh, report from the city planner, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, this is a request, uh, for a special review use for an accessory dwelling unit at one forty-five South Reynolds. This is in the R1 low-density residential district. Public notice was published and the property was posted at least fifteen days prior to this meeting as required by law. The planning commission considered this application at their regular meeting on November seventeenth. Uh, they, after the commission reviewed the application with staff and the applicant, adjacent property owners to the south, Cliff and Beth Landers expressed concerns that the ADU, um, would be intrusive as windows on the south side of that unit would look down into their building, into their home. That was discussed at length, um, and they appeared to have come to an agreement with help from the planning commission with the applicant. Um, the commission recommended approval of the application with staff's suggested conditions in a six yes, one no vote. I'll go into details of that in just a minute, after I get through the preliminaries. Um, at one forty-five South Reynolds, there is a single-family home. The ADU would comprise about seven hundred and twenty square feet in the loft area of an existing garage that was built in 2012 that's basically behind the house. Uh, there is access to the property on Reynolds Avenue and there's ample parking on an almost half-acre lot. The garage was built with a permit in 2012. It does meet its setbacks and it, the garage is approximately twenty or more feet away from the Landers' home, which is just to the south. And that's, there's a map in your, um, packet that shows you kind of the, um, approximate locations of, of those structures. Surrounding land uses are residential and surrounding zoning is R1 and R2, which is also residential. The applicant is providing the required onsite parking spaces. Water and sanitation services are onsite and have been or will be revised to include the additional use. The applicant will obtain a building permit for the construction of the ADU and has shown that he is meeting the requirements of the ADU regulations, which are also listed in your, in your packet. The applicant stated that he will plant trees along the south property line to mitigate what the Landers considered to be a visual nuisance. They were not necessarily convinced that the trees would provide an adequate visual buffer. And with the help of the planning commission, they and Mr. Stoltz, who is the applicant, agreed that they, he, that he would frost the windows on the south side. Um, we verified that with both of them. They agreed to that and we suggest a condition, um, that that be done on the, on those particular windows. They both agreed that that's something that they will do. Their other concern had to do with full-time versus part-time use. And staff was concerned after that meeting that, um, perhaps he made a, a material representation that he would use this ADU only for part-time use. As we were thinking about this after, the ADU was actually, um, the purpose of the ADU is to provide a full-time, an additional full-time unit wherever it might be located on a property. And so rather than holding him to that, we suggest that he not be held to a material representation of that nature, that it's a part-time use. He has made an appropriate application. He is mitigating any nuisance that has been found, if, to be, um, found during this process. Um, and he meets the approval criteria. So staff has made a suggestion that he not be held to that and there is a condition in there that, that, um, speaks to it. And I'll go through those conditions in, in just a minute. There are referral comments from the city, well, the city engineer did not, but, but the fire district, the sand district. It meets the criteria for approval. Other development features were considered and the only other condition has to do with a visual mitigation. And I'll go through the recommended conditions in, in detail. The applicant shall comply with all requirements of chapter seventeen fifteen accessory dwelling units of the Canyon City zoning regulations. As such regulations pertain to the ADU requested, which is an AD, a new ADU in an existing, in an existing garage, excuse me. That's a typo on number one. The applicant shall obtain all required building, electrical and plumbing permits for any construction or alterations that may be necessary and obtain a certificate of occupancy if required. Number three, the applicant shall comply with any and all requirements of the Fremont Sanitation District and the Canyon City Area Fire District. Number four, unless otherwise modified by this approval or other subsequent decision of the city council, as it may apply to this request, all material representations made by the applicant in its, in its application submittal and/or in any public hearing shall be binding upon the applicant. The applicant's failure to perform in accordance with such material representations could result in the revocation of this approval. Number five, the south-facing windows of the ADU shall be frosted, in quotes, to provide visual mitigation between the single-family home to the south and the subject second-story ADU. Number six, notwithstanding other material representations made by the applicant, full-time use of the ADUs contemplated. And number seven, the approval hearing granted shall extend only to the ADU plan as it is presented in this application, which is a new ADU in the loft area of the existing detached garage and will terminate if the ADU has not received a certificate of occupancy within one year of the approval of this special review use request. There are additional, there's additional information in your packet materials and if you have any other questions, um, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you. At this particular point, I'm not sure if Mr. Stoltz, the applicant, is here. The last time I looked, he wasn't.
Is the applicant here, Mr. Stoltz? Okay. Are there any questions then?
I, I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my question kind of revolves around the frosted with provide visual mitigation. Um, it, Mr. Havens, is that in fact, that terminology or that verbiage give us enough clarity for enforcement? I mean, what does that mean?
What it means to me, and I think what it means to staff, is that the, the windows would be rendered opaque. You couldn't see through the, the frosted windows. I, this is the first time this particular concern has ever been raised in, in, in my twenty-five years of, uh, being connected with planning commission matters. Um, it, it seemed to be a remedy to satisfy both the applicant and the neighbors and that's why it's among the conditions. It, it, it could be that you may not want to place that requirement and, and still could approve the, the application. But it's, it's a safeguard requested, not objected to, so it's there.
I understand the safeguard. I just don't know that it's reasonably enforceable. And wha- what would happen in five years if a window were broken and replaced with plain glass? How does that get enforced?
If the neighbor were uncomfortable with that situation, brought it to the attention of staff, there could be a public hearing respecting that issue. It wouldn't necessarily be an egregious violation of the terms and conditions, but it, it would merit some consideration. Um, and on- once again, the, the, the decision-makers would have discretion as to whether they would require a replacement with a frosted or opaque window of some sort to, to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors if the neighbors are still there and still concerned.
If I might add also, when we come upon this kind of, of a situation, um, in a practical matter, if, if the neighbor to the south complained, whoever that might be, living in, in that particular home at the time, complained, we would probably go back to see exactly what that requirement was and then ask, simply ask that they comply with the requirement, that they frost that window or refrost their windows. Those need to be done periodically over the, over years as that can wear off. So, I mean, beyond that, you know, we would try to get the applicant or the, the homeowner to, um, comply. And in general, we would have success.
Doug, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I'm back to Jim's comment about, um, uh, what that means. I think one of the things that we might want to do is, is to add what the, uh, the attorney mentioned, that it's an, it's an, it's an opaque material. It could be glass, it could be something else. Uh, as long as it meets that requirement that it's, it's not creating the opportunity for people in an upper level to view in, in any way what's going on in that lower level. So whether that's a, a frosting, you know, it could be they decide to, you know, board it up and put stucco on it. I, I don't know what it's going to be someday in the future, but it needs to meet that opaque requirement. And that probably is the key.
That's my concern. This is that while that verbiage may mean something to somebody, I, I think in general layman's terms, frosted with visual mitigation, I mean, if I use a ten percent frost, have I, have I in fact met those requirements for frosting? I, I think that, because that's such a critical factor in terms of the southward neighbor giving their approval, I, I think something much more specific to support that particular neighbor would, would be helpful.
We could certainly put that in there.
Mr. Weed?
Thank you. Jim, you kind of.
Jim, you kind of broached the same subject that I wanted to talk about. I actually drove by the property today and took a look at it and quite frankly, there's nothing to see from the, the windows on the south side of this ADU except a backyard. The windows on the adjacent house are far away and running north-south. I was curious if the Landers are here this evening, that would be the neighbors, because whether I'm the person that makes the motion or if anybody else makes the motion, my recommendation is going to be to remove that condition entirely and just encourage the neighbors to work out an agreement, whether that is planting trees or whatever, but I think it's an unusual request and I don't think it serves any real purpose anyhow.
I would say in speaking for them, they indicated that those windows could see into their home, into the back of their home. I did not verify that personally.
I would disagree.
Well, I was on Planning Commission at time and I, I think it bodes well that both parties here had an amicable, an amicable conclusion and they worked that out themselves because that occurred after the meeting.
It did.
And there, but it was acceptable to both, whether we get into how opaque is opaque, they were happy with it and the citizens, you know, that was a good thing. Scott?
Thank you. I would like to add to Dennis's concern. This is the first time, you said in 25 years that this has come up. Are we setting a precedent? If someone wanted to build an ADU and they're within the regulations, do they, and a neighbor has a concern, do they all of a sudden have to make these accommodations to get the ADU approved?
No, they don't. That's going to be your call. However, all of those developmental types of features can be considered and it could be, it could be, if you feel that it is, that visual mitigation is an environmental influence that may need to be mitigated. According to them, it was and at least the Landers and that's why they got together and worked with the applicant and they agreed on this particular remedy. Now, however, it could be that we just, as Mr. Weed has suggested, that, that we take that out and just let them deal with it as they've already agreed to.
And that's why I would second a motion, Dennis, if that was the case. If the current landowners have already worked this out, I just don't see how it could transcend and, to the next landowners and, you know, if there was broken windows again, it just seems like an issue that we really don't want to have to deal with, in addition to setting a precedent for future ADUs.
Mr. Gill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was a part of this conversation and, in, on the Planning Commission and they both brought very good points to the table. The Landers were very concerned that it was going to turn into a primary dwelling, something that he rented out. His representation in front of Planning Commission was that he was going to use this as a, a guest quarters, okay? That was very important to the Landers, being right next door to them. And then the second issue was the ability to see into their screen porch, you know, it's somewhat perhaps invading their environment by people if this place, if there was strangers in this, in this ADU. And they were both fairly adamant about their sides and during the Planning Commission meeting, we were able to, with the help of everybody, kind of put this frosted window in there and that eliminated a lot of the Landers' concerns. I spoke with them after the Planning Commission meeting and it seemed like they were both very happy with the conditions that were set forth and everybody's concerns were relieved. And that's just my input of what actually happened at the Planning Commission meeting.
I will add that that condition, the visual mitigation, number five, was not in the original Planning Commission recommendation to you. That came after with, after.
During the meeting.
Right. As this was resolved by the Planning Commission and I spoke with the Landers after the fact to make sure that they had talked to Mr. Stoltzvis and to make sure that they had worked on this together and arrived at a solution. So I'm the one who put that in there.
During the meeting?
No.
After the meeting?
After the fact, yes.
So this was approved, the Planning Commission had approved this?
Without condition number five.
Then I would go ahead and make a motion to remove that as Dennis has recommended.
Let's go ahead with the process of hearing from the audience and stuff.
Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting, the special view and we'll enter...
Is it introducing it? Go ahead now.
Ask for an amendment?
Go ahead and ask for a motion to amend prior to introducing it. Is that correct, Mr. Havens?
That's how I would recommend it happen.
Okay, well, then ask for a motion to amend. I'd like to make that motion. Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I'd make the motion to amend the conditions of approval, the recommended conditions of approval for this ADU, removing item number five, the requirement for frosted windows on the south side.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Would you call a roll, please?
What I hear is to amend this ordinance number one prior to introduction to remove the condition number five. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Okay, we're done with that then. We can move on to the vacation. No?
Go ahead and do ordinance number one.
Okay, I need ordinance number one to introduce, as amended, I need three to, three members to introduce. Go ahead, Mr. Weed.
You picked the three.
I picked the three. I'm sorry.
But I'm willing to be one.
Mr. Weed, Scott and Mr. Meisner. I knew that. What now?
Well, now we have to read it.
Oh, oh. Okay, we got the three. Okay, clerk needs to read the title.
This is a bill for ordinance number one, series of 2016, and ordinance amending section 17.24.050 of the municipal code and add there to a new subsection identifying a certain land use permitted only by special review and accessory dwelling unit located at 145 South Reynolds Avenue.
Are discussions on the motion? I need a motion from the council first. Mr. Weed?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd make a recommendation to approve ordinance number one, series of 2016.
It's amended on first reading.
Did we amend the ordinance or did we just amend the conditions?
I think it was submitted without paragraph five, given what you did before.
Right, with paragraph five, so now he's a...
Oh, yeah. I see it in there.
Ordinance number one.
As amended.
As amended.
On first reading.
Okay, I have a second. Smith, second. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom?
Aye.
Approved by majority vote.
Wow, that was a tough one. I'm going to try and make it up here. I'm in a public hearing for the vacation of public right-of-way. Could I have a report from the city planner?
Yes, you may. The Yakka Trust owns property at 205 and 207 South Diamond, which are lots one, two, three and four of block nine in the South Fruitmere subdivision. They have submitted a petition to vacate East Water Street, which is to the north of their property, and Cheeseborough Street, which is to the south of their property. Currently, three of the four lots have public access to the sections of East Water Street and Cheeseborough Street that are requested for vacation. Neither of these streets that are west of Diamond and bordering these properties have been constructed. By vacating the subject rights of way, that would leave lots two, three and four, and you can refer to your maps there also that might help with understanding how this is working. Vacating the subject rights of way would leave lots two, three and four without access to a public street, which is a requirement of, of building and subdivision. The applicant therefore to remedy this has submitted a subdivision exemption plat application, a separate application from this, to reconfigure the lot so that all of the resulting lots would have access to Diamond Avenue. That lot line adjustment will also incorporate the adjacent vacated rights of way, which would be, if approved, would be Water Street, Cheeseborough Street and Clara Avenue to the west. And staff is recommending approval of that. However, to assure that lots two, three and four are not left without appropriate street frontage, upon the approval of these vacations, staff has included a condition that would require that the subdivision exemption plat be recorded concurrently with this vacation so that as soon as the vacation is recorded, if approved, then the lot line adjustment would have to follow immediately. This was referred to the city engineer and to all of the ditch companies and utilities that are noted at the top of page two. The city engineer recommended that vacating the streets was appropriate but reserving an easement for the existing and future utilities and drainage and ditch companies as well for all of their maintenance and possible future utilities. This application meets the approval criteria and if it's approved, as it would be conditioned. So the vacation would add additional land to the parcels on both sides of these rights of way and also these rights of way can no longer be utilized as platted due to the other vacations that have happened in the past and you can also see that on your map. As conditioned, all the lots would have access to a public street. Public purposes have been considered. The city engineer recommends that the city reserve an each easement over the full width of the streets for utilities, stormwater drainage for ditch companies and other utility needs. Existing facilities, if they exist, would not need to be relocated because of the reserved Public notice was sent to all property owners within 300 feet of these streets as well as all the utility providers were provided notice by mail of the petition and there are attached materials in your staff packet. The applicant's representative, George Hall, who is a surveyor who provided this information for us, is available if you have any questions and I would be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Oh, would you introduce yourself, please, Mr. Hall?
Yes, Council. My name's George Hall. I'm owner-operator of Crown Point Land Services here in town and here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of council? Counsel, the council?
Yeah, I, I've got a real, it's a pretty basic, these lots are going to be reconfigured. Are they going to be like flags down to Diamond to provide access to the lots?
One of the lots will be a flag lot that will encompass larger part of the property in the backside to the west. The other three lots will all of them front with the proper width per the regulations on Diamond Avenue.
Sounds good to me.
All of those lots meet the, the minimum standards.
Okay.
And then some.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Havens?
Just, just for our record, Mr. Hall, your clients do understand that the lot line adjustment must be done or the vacation will not occur. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Just a question off the top of my head, does that mean we can use the, the word Chesborough Street over again? Never mind it.
In 108 years.
In 108 years. That's an old subdivision down there. Okay. Any other comments or questions from council? Anybody in the audience would like to comment on this? Thank you, Mr. Hall. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. I need three to introduce ordinance number two, series 2016, Mr. Meisner, Mr. Gill and Mr. Scott. Would you read by title, please? Getting better at it though.
This is a bill for ordinance number two, series of 2016, and ordinance vacating a public right-of-way and reserving easements in the city of Canyon City, Colorado, East Water Street and Cheeseborough Street between South Diamond Avenue and Clara Avenue.
Going to have a motion and a second from council? From the council? This is where someone makes a motion. Oh, Mr. Weed, I'm sorry.
You gotta look.
Okay. I'm working on it. See, I didn't pay any attention to that side and so I'm, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'd make the motion to approve ordinance number two, series of 2016 on first reading.
Second.
I made a second. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Weed?
Aye.
Councilmember Exstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Gill?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Do we have any business to conduct? These ordinances are tough. They're, okay, yes, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at this time.